Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Florin.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, we'll start by welcoming our new city administrator, Aaron Koiker. Welcome, Aaron, to your first council meeting, first of many, we hope. And let's see. Ask now if there are any additions or changes to this evening's agenda. Nat, we'll move to our consent agenda, where we have approval of minutes for the November 13th council meeting. We have approval for the November 9 special payroll of $241.21. The November 17th payroll of $123,42.32. Approval of library board minutes. Approval of the USDA Step 1 debt payment in the amount of $12,975. And from what I understand from Rebecca, this is probably an approval we will be making on a monthly basis so that we have a record of this payment each month for our state auditor. We have approval of the CoBank Step 1 debt payment of $68.01, which I understand is interest. Approval of the employee appreciation celebration at the Street Department on December 22nd at high noon. And approval of claims in the amount of $108,716.59. Any questions regarding these consent agenda items? Nat, entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes, but abstained from the minutes from the last meeting.
Florin.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, we'll move to our public appearances. See, we have a brief presentation by Rick Shattuck from the Fairfield Iowa Association of Digital Currency.
Well, Mayor and council, it's a great pleasure and to be able to bring something, some news that may be of value for the Fairfield community and economy. And you may have seen in the news the value of Bitcoin rising. That's just under $10,000 now. Only wish I made this presentation about three years ago, but the Fairfield when it was under 1,000. And the Fairfield Iowa Association of Digital Currency, a system volunteers since 2014, educating the Fairfield community about digital currency. And we've had the, an opportunity that we haven't seen since the days of the telegroup when there was decentralization of telecommunications and centralization of communications under AT&amp;T made standardizations and then decentralization. It rise to many companies in town that benefited. And another great wave is occurring now, decent, the decentralization of currency and exchange, also in our record keeping using the blockchain technology, which basically is replicating records, that would be, you know, public records on many thousands of computers called miners. I brought one as a visual so you can see what it looks like. And anybody can get one of these devices. That's a power supply. And this is the so-called miner or transaction processing machine that many thousands of people have worldwide. And although you can hack one computer, the odds of hacking thousands at the same time is infinitesimal. So that's the key to its security, strength in numbers, having records replicated. So we're very happy to talk about digital currency and educate the public, answer any questions you have. And hopefully, the community will benefit financially. Now, it possibly could be a bubble, it may go back down again, but the idea of digital currency itself is here to stay. And was invented in America. There are the team that went by the name Satoshi Nakamoto, consisting of some computer sciences, mostly in California and Seattle. But it could, but innovations can happen here in Fairfield, Iowa as well. We have a well-educated community. We have fast internet connectivity. Those are the building blocks of creating perhaps an even better coin. Bitcoin has gotten so popular, it has slowed down. The transaction times have gotten into hours. So there's room for someone in Fairfield, maybe a Fairfield High School student, to invent a better way. So we provided seminars at the Fairfield Library and at the Art Walk. And we'd like to inspire more academic study of this blockchain technology. There are universities that offer, given a master's degree in digital currency. There's one in Cypress. But perhaps it could be one in the community, Community College or Marishi University. And we like to encourage entrepreneurs and businessmen to examine this field. Many of the innovations now are happening in Japan and Switzerland, but it can happen right here in Iowa. I was in Washington DC and went to the office of Senator Grassley to tell them about the opportunities that Iowa could enjoy in digital currency. And so they, nobody at that time had any Bitcoin. We've been giving away some Bitcoin to people, over 200 people now, including Mayor Ed Malloy and some. If anybody would like one, let's say $1 worth of Bitcoin, so that it's not so much that it seems like a campaign contribution or anything like that. If there are any rules like that, hopefully $1 is fine. And then you can experience it to see how it works. You don't have to get those machines or anything. You could just get an account. There are several services such as Coinbase and Gemini where you can store your digital currency. And perhaps Fairfield could learn from communities such as Keene, New Hampshire, where people can go all day just using Bitcoin. So perhaps someday Hy-Vee and everybody's revolution, revelations. And the bank in town could offer farm loans in Bitcoin. So there's a lot of potential. And it'll help to avert the ravages of inflation. Because over the, over the years, people have been working harder and harder because the value of the dollar is going down. It's been a little bit of a theft from all the different citizens. So Chief Thomas, I'm reporting a theft. Since 1913, the value of the dollar has gone down to a fraction of what it was at the time. But digital currency is neutral. It doesn't favor any particular party. It's run by mathematics. And anyone can participate in the mining process, but it's, it's an equal playing field. And we in Fairfield, we know about Fairfield, equal playing fields. And a currency system that's fair to all is bound to succeed.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate knowing that you're available in the community to educate our citizens in this area. It's fortuitous that you're right. There was a front page article about Bitcoin reaching its highest valuation yet and about Wall Street investment banks and hedge fund managers starting to entertain investing in this. So we know it's something we'll probably see in the future. And we wish your association here good luck. Counsel, any questions for presenter? Nat, thank you very much.
We could just make one, one item that I brought. We want everybody to be safe, so we educate people on this storage devices. This is called a Trisor device, where you can use a thumb drive and then keep, download and keep your Bitcoins safe in a safety deposit box at a bank.
Okay.
So we have provide training on that.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counsel, now we'll move to our resolutions, action items and ordinances. And the first for your consideration is a tax abatement application from Catherine Vickers. This is renovation work on the interior of the home, a value of $40,000. Is Catherine here this evening?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So you have her application. Any questions regarding the tax abatement? Nat, entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Moved by Florin.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Next, counsel, we have two, two pieces of action to approve urban development areas for economic development. The first one is, we have discussed, which is the extension of Tyler Street, which is in the West Industrial Park urban renewal area. So first, we will open a public hearing in consideration of establishing the economic development area. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue? Nat will declare the public hearing closed. And then we'll go ahead and talk a little bit about the project before approving a resolution. Melanie, if you would give us an update on it, please.
Okay. This urban renewal area includes the, a large portion of the industrial park or the old industrial park. FITA also has their industrial park out on 227th, but this is the one on 23rd. And a majority of the funds are, will go towards the extension of Tyler Street, which will not only service traffic's new development, but also open up about 25 acres of FITA property for development by using these funds to construct 750 feet of eight-inch-thick pavement for the, for the street itself, 825 feet of water main to provide additional service to traffics and then any buildings that would be on the FITA property. And then sanitary sewer extension as well to aid that FITA property. So it's a very, very good project with a good pro forma. And we appreciate traffic's development in this area to be able to use the increment for these projects.
Correct. And I just, the pro forma that Melanie's referring to is the increment that's already there with the new building that was opened a couple of months ago. And we do understand that Traffic's is planning another expansion. We don't know exactly when, but within the next one to two years, we'd say, which would be the basis of this street development as well.
Right. And we also have included a majority of 23rd Street in this urban renewal district. So additional increment that's not used for this direct development can be used towards the reconstruction or repairs of 23rd Street all the way up to Burlington.
Right. Also, just a very good way to put this together, Josh, you'd agree that opening up this other land as well, because your industrial park there is starting to become limited in, in space.
Absolutely. And one of the things that John Morrissey, Melanie and Peter worked on together was including a number of other FITA parcels in the urban renewal district, just to keep that potential open within the TIF ordinance.
Right.
That'll be used. So we think it's favorable for all parties involved.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Melanie. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this economic development area? Entertained a motion to approve the resolution establishing the economic development area. Wes Tyler.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, another project that is underway and about to go into another phase, which is the Lincoln Avenue subdivision. And there will also, there's also a proposed expansion in that area. So we'll open the public hearing on the Lincoln Avenue subdivision for urban renewal plan. Seeing no one interested in speaking to that, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll invite our city attorney, John Morrissey, to update us on the economic development agreement.
Yeah, we have basically the same proposition on this as what was just discussed on the industrial park plan. And that is that you want to get this plan approved as far as the increments that's available, so you can certify it by December 1st. That's what's going on with both of these. The Lincoln Avenue plan basically deals with the first of three possible phases. And it deals with about 10 structures that are supposed to be along Lincoln Avenue. Hence, that is the name of this plan. The theory being that we capture what we can off of the new development, turn the corner having passed what will be the next phase, which is going to be an extension of South Court Avenue, and then possibly a third phase north of 24 additional units minimum that will be in the second phase. But to do that, we have to first get off the ground on our first phase. The plan itself and the district map and so forth that are part of what you're considering tonight, again, entitles this area to be certified and the increment to be captured in a tax increment finance ordinance, just like what's going on out in the industrial park. But in either of those cases, what you usually have brought to you as a package is also a development agreement. The development agreement right now is on the table with the Lincoln.
Neighborhood Builders.
Pardon?
Neighborhood Builders.
Sorry, I'm losing the name. Neighborhood Builders Development Agreement is on the table, being tweaked, I guess is the way I would put it. Our Aylers Public Finance Firm over our shoulder on this felt that we should go ahead with the map adoption and the urban renewal plan for the district at this time, to be sure we catch the certification date, December 1. At the same time that there are some things that we're ironing out with the developers on the flexibility that they want to have going into Phase 2. And we sort of stepped back from Phase 1 as far as very much flexibility, because basically both sides of the agreement have done what they talked about. Having in a development agreement, they've been performing, and you can see the result down there as far as some nice multiple units being built on Lincoln Avenue. At the same time that the city's installed infrastructure that it said it would in the draft agreements, which we've had in May, June, August and September discussions with their attorneys and our attorneys and Aylers over our shoulder. So at this point, smoothing out some of the things as far as the flexibility the developers want, turning the corner into Phase 2, is basically what's going on in getting the Phase 1 agreement finalized. Aylers firm did not feel eyes, or feel that we were exposing ourselves to any particular risk on the first phase, because both sides have already substantially performed. Coming into the second phase, we will be having some more discussions and additional meetings with our Economic Development Committee as far as the flexibility that the developer group would like to see at the same time. They'd like to see the city stepping out and taking more risk. The city and Aylers over our shoulder is saying, well, you want to try to control your risk somewhat by not overcommitting. The difference between the two views will be where we land on a commitment as far as minimum assessment value for Phase 2, and how many units get built or committed in Phase 2, and what kind of units they are. Flexibility they're talking about would be duplex, triplex, fourplex, some multiple of those things that they have been drawn in plans that have been discussed with our council committee so far repeatedly. But they want the flexibility that if these first 10 units market better as duplexes than fourplexes, that they can change their mind about the next group of buildings they're going to put up and be allowed to do so, which generally our policy has been, we don't tell the developers how their unit should look or what their configuration should be, as long as it complies with at least planned unit development conditions and so forth. But right now, to get to the Phase 2 agreement, we need to have some more fine tuning on the Phase 1 agreement. But the Phase 1 agreement, for all practical purposes, performance is already occurring and is ongoing. So for tonight, and this is also out of the mouths of a couple of our Aylers advisors, we want to be sure we capture the December 1 certification opportunity on this phase of development down there, with an eye on the fact that we'll be doing some more negotiating about Phase 2 and hopefully Phase 3 as Phase 2 develops. We look at Phase 2 to about, maybe another year or two. And another part of the flexibility that developers are asking about is the extent of commitment into a third year, if necessary. And Aylers doesn't think that's a problem either, but if these things sell well, such as the experience at South Gate showed, they may be not worried about timing so much into the future. But right now, while they're in the process of building their first group, I think you, some of you might have been to the open house and seen the first four. I think three of those were already sold, weren't they, Josh? It's going predictably well. So the extent that Aylers felt you exposing yourself to any kind of risk on this first phase is minimal. So I mean, I'm just encouraging you to go.
Thank you, John. That's a good summary. And it also kind of puts our Economic Development Committee on notice that there is work to do on finalizing negotiations for Phase 2. But let's move ahead with the approval, entertain a motion to approve the Lincoln Avenue urban renewal plan.
Still moved.
Moved by Revulinski.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen.
Quick question. This doesn't commit the city to spending funds before a certain increment level is reached, does it?
That's correct.
Okay.
But we've already spent some funds.
We have, as a city, you did put in sewer for those, which is really out of this project now because it's already been done. But any cost moving forward, for example, you'll see when we will be doing design of Tyler Street, we're not bringing you a design of Court Street because the development agreement's not done. So we're, we're not proposing spending any more funds until development agreement goes forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? If not, please call the roll.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Florin.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have two action items, which are to establish TIF fund accounting for both projects. Rebecca, comment on why we're establishing these?
The state auditor is required that we have TIF fund accounts, basically, for it's an internal thing with our accounting program. And it just lets everything track it, track what's being spent on what TIF area.
Great. So these will be line, internal line items in our own accounting and will allow the greatest transparency for our auditors to see where those funds are coming in. Great, thank you. So entertain a motion first to approve the TIF fund for the West Industrial Park.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Florin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Second one is the establishment of the TIF fund for the Lincoln Avenue project.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Revulinski and second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, we have consideration of engineering services agreement for Tyler Street extension. Steve?
Yes. I'll have to say that I'm filling in for Matt Walker tonight, who couldn't make it for some family reasons. So I'm doing my best to know what's going on here. This is, excuse me, an engineering agreement for the West Tyler project that you just approved the TIF for. As was discussed, it's about 750 feet of street, 27 feet wide, storm sewer and some water main. The bid, when we do the bid for the project, it will incorporate an optional bid for about 630 feet of sanitary sewer that would get constructed if there was enough budget. This is a relatively standard agreement for design assistance through bidding and then also construction-related services. The schedule is to be putting the drawings and specs on file in the March timeframe, March of next year. So probably a bid opening in the April-ish for construction, probably summer to fall next year, so.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Any questions regarding this engineering services agreement? Nat entertain a motion to approve the agreement with French Reniker Associates.
Still moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we're going to make John Revulinski's last meeting in December busy, as we have four public hearings to, to schedule here on top of some we did while you were away. So don't think it's going to be a short meeting in December, John. So the first will be a resolution fixing a date for public hearing for the approval of land, which is the acquisition of agricultural land for the Phase 2. Melanie, if you?
You've already held a public hearing for a majority of the property owners on Step 2. However, there were, there were four property owners, to be exact, one on Walton Road, two in Royal Oaks Subdivision, and one on Glenview Circle, who did not receive a 30-day written notice. We didn't get the letters returned. They got delivered somehow, but then those property owners told us that they did not get notified. So we are reholding the public hearing for those four properties so that we can give them the proper 30-day notice.
Okay, that's why, do we anticipate that they will have questions at that time? Were they, so they really didn't see any of the original drawings or?
You know, the, I sent out the notice of this public hearing last week so that they could have the 30 days. One of the property owners was actually at the last, at the last meeting.
Correct.
So this is, I'm not expecting any questions or issues with these property owners. It's more of a paperwork issue so that we have the proper 30-day notice for all of them.
Great, thank you, Melanie. So entertain a motion to set December 18th for the public hearing.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Florin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Then we have application for a rural, rural development grant for Step 2. And that will be set for December 18th as well. Any comments on that, Melanie? No? Okay. So entertain a motion to set that public hearing date.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Florin. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, we have a public hearing that'll be set for December 18th. And this is to vacate east-west portion of the alley between Third and Fourth Street, and I believe Grimes and Depot. So comments on that?
Also on the 18th, we said the last meeting, the public hearing for the Urban Renewal District for this, not Urban Renewals, I'm sorry, the Planned Unit Development for this same project, this is the New Chicago Planned Unit Development, and so the vacating of the alley needs to occur so that this group of lots can make the one and a half acres necessary for a Planned Unit Development. It's a relatively small piece of the alley. Two-thirds of the alley has already been vacated on the former Catholic Church site, so this is just a very small piece, I want to say maybe 50 feet or something like that of the alley.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, entertain a motion to set the public hearing for December 18th. Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Then we will set a public hearing on December 18th, and this is for rezoning requests from M2 to B1. This is also a very small piece of land contiguous to Taco John's, so we'll set the public hearing for December 18th on that as well.
So moved.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have an ordinance amending our general misdemeanor penalty provision, and I'll ask our city attorney to come back and walk us through this, please.
Right, I think all of you may have gotten a, or correct me if I'm wrong on this.
Yes, everyone.
Does everybody have a 9.88.010? Okay. That is our current general penalty provision, which covers all misdemeanors you can commit under the Fairfield Municipal Code prohibitions. And the key part of this is that punishments presently are sentenced to pay a fine of at least $50 but not exceeding 500, or serve a term in the county jail of not more than 30 days, and pay the cost of prosecution. The legislature, in its wisdom, created a situation, reacted to a Supreme Court ruling that said, in some cases where there's a simple misdemeanor violation, there may be an infringement of a defendant's right to be represented by counsel where there is a risk of incarceration. And it happened in Pope County, and it happened in a situation where there was assault conduct and the person was put in jail for an offense that probably could have been in district court as an indictable, but it wasn't. The net result was the magistrate didn't appoint counsel to represent this individual who was indigent, and the Supreme Court looked at it and applied the same standard they do for district court indigency, which basically says if you can't afford counsel, you get counsel appointed and they determine your eligibility for that generally, and then if it's determined later that you could afford or could afford to pay part of it, you do that. There is some gaps in the way that handles in the district court level with indictable offenses. If there's an offense that doesn't fit under what the general state code provides and is presently, they have a system where the Iowa Department of Inspections and Appeals gets contract claims turned in by court-appointed attorneys, and they're paid out of a state fund that's budgeted for each year, except for the gaps. Those gaps get covered by the County Board of Supervisors, having to have a fund to catch things where there is a not provided-for way of payment with the Department of Inspections and Appeals. On the misdemeanor side, legislature doesn't have a comparable Department of Inspection and Appeals for the misdemeanor violations that are punished by jail time as well as fines. Supreme Court said that doesn't make any difference. You have to provide for a way to see that an entitled person should get representative counsel if there is any possibility of imprisonment. Now, there are many more simple misdemeanor filings, and I think the chief can bear this out, probably 10 to 1, as far as the things that go through our court system. They all start with filings of magistrate court, and the indictables get kicked up into district court, but the vast majority go through a magistrate review, and the magistrate will be the one asking the question. Legislature imposes January 1st as a performance time on this particular statute, and the change, and the magistrate will be asking, does the city have a fund equivalent to what the Inspection and Appeals Department up in Des Moines has for district court cases to manage the costs of court-appointed counsel in cases under our misdemeanor prohibitions for anybody that is exposed to the possibility of jail time? It doesn't make any difference if I go in as a city attorney and say, we're never going to ask for jail time. It's a fine, and that's it. That doesn't make any difference, according to the Supreme Court. What you have to do instead, what the legislature decided to impose as a statutory responsibility, is you have to create a fund if your ordinance creates that general penalty for jail. So rather than create a budget issue for you that could amount to tens of thousands of dollars for appointments, even on the simplest kinds of violations up in magistrate court, you can get around this by reversing your general penalty provision so that it says your ordinary penalty is a fine unless you have a specific reference in a particular ordinance where you want to impose a jail penalty also. And so you go from the general penalty to general fines only instead of penalty that is both fines and jail, and you sort of cherry pick those particular violations that you think probably warrant a possible enhancement that would include jail time, and you go on and you identify those. It's a perfect time to do that right now because you're recodifying, and you can think it through on the ones that may be more obvious. Somebody who is in a situation where it's assaultive, or there is repetitive theft, or there is something that may well result in a reason why you'd want to have the person see the inside of a cell, are the areas that would be studied and looked at and recommended back to the council in the recode as far as places to add back your jail part of the penalty. But what you have in front of you as far as the recommended revision of this to avoid doing some budget adjustment for a fund to cover indigent defense is what's in the tablets for you under a amendment to Chapter Nine, Section 88.010 that substitutes a provision, the last couple of lines of which state that it's punishable unless another penalty is specified according to Section 903.1.1, which is a fine-defining statute, and the fines under that at present in the state code are $50 up to $750. So you will have a little larger range as far as what the fine is that can be imposed. You won't have any jail time under 903.1 sub 1A, and that's what I'm recommending to you do to get around this issue about creating an indigent defense fund that you don't need to create.
Okay, so essentially you're...
Best I can explain it.
You're, so you're aligning us with this most recent state code definition?
Right.
Okay. Which is the 903.11A. Okay. Thank you, John.
You need to get this adopted by January 1st, or our magistrate's going to be asking on each case filed after that time, what have we done and should we be appointing somebody? And it'll depend on what comes up. I don't know for sure what kind of citations will be filed then, but I probably can't tell the police department. Hold off until we get another ordinance adopted, and then we'll decide on where we go with the charges we file. It just doesn't work that way.
Okay.
So we can get this adopted if you put it through the first reading tonight, have a public hearing on it at the December meeting, and the council is inclined to waive to the 3rd and adopt it yet this year. So that would be my recommendation.
All right, thank you, John. So right now, I'd invite, we'll open the public hearing on this first reading. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the ordinance revision? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions for...
I do have a question, John, and I heard both your presentations here and also John presented to our Public Safety Committee earlier. My only question is this. So once we pass this, and then if we decide we want to have jail time as a potential penalty for specific infractions of, you know, whatever it is, assault or something like you mentioned, in that case, then do we need to start a fund at that time?
You will, you'll have to decide if it's important enough to have the jail penalty to expose yourself to that on a limited basis.
So the...
In the meantime, what I'm hopeful is that somebody like Phil Miller, our state representative, can point out that they've left us holding the bag, which I think most municipalities have figured out that could be the case. Legislature sometimes doesn't seem to worry too much about what bags we get left holding, but I think we would point out that we're only doing it on the most serious of our misdemeanor situations in the opinion of the council, and we're only going to try to budget this much if we have to then. So that would go along with any discussion about specifying these violations are bad enough that we want to have some jail alternative.
Is there a minimum fund balance that has to be funded in that account? How's it calculated?
You can try to guesstimate kinds of violations and so forth that we might look at, and I think the chief probably does have statistics on types of violations and their frequency. So if there's, you know, there's 10 assaultive situations, and that's one that you pick, you probably try to guesstimate what a municipality might be paying a person to appear with the defendant, advise the defendant and have a conference, maybe decide whether or not to plead or have a trial, still probably dealing with a matter of a limited number of hours, and the court then submitting it to the city as a billing for the city to pay after it allows what it thinks a reasonable fee is for the number of hours or time involved. Once you have a few experiences, you would probably then buzz it, let's say that somebody spends $500, $600 on a court-appointed counsel on a misdemeanor situation, and you have 15 of those offenses in a year, you'd budget $9,000, whatever you needed to cover that.
But this ordinance here will protect us from all of the fining level incidents.
Right. Everything is ordinarily going to...
Send money aside for all those minor offenses that might come up.
Yeah, you just may have some offenses where you, very serious, you want to have the alternative or some additional punishment.
There are two minor typos in this that we're going to want to fix before we vote on it.
Three.
Three? Oh, well, it'll have to, oh, grabbing your... I can just send them to Tammy, too.
Yes, you probably can, but what were the...
The first line, I think we're missing the word be after declared to be unlawful.
Yeah.
And the last line, under punishable, there's the letter I. I believe that's supposed to be the word in.
And I think in the fourth line, after the word reference is, those two words, unless another, should be a comma. Don't mess with this, counsel, John.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have one more question. By passing this ordinance, I understand, I mean, we don't want to certainly have to start such a fund because, but, but does it mean that we can't, we're stating by ordinance that any enforcement of our misdemeanor in Fairfield now does not have jail associated with it?
Correct.
That's what we're saying right now.
Doesn't mean you could...
So we go through later and add it on to specific infractions if we want, but right now.
You could still end up with people in jail, John.
That don't pay their fines or...
Well, not necessarily. It means from the start of something, they may have already earned themselves a cell if they interfered with the officer.
Well, that would be an acceleration of the misdemeanor into something else, probably, right?
Yes, sir, that would be.
Then I have a question for the chief, then, in that case.
Yes, sir.
I mean, do you see this as a problem? I mean, you know, limiting your ability to enforce the law?
Not usually. Quite frankly, we keep Mr. Morrissey busy with a lot of civil law-type stuff, employee law, and the officers usually, with the more serious, will write the state charge, the full-time prosecutor. With the county, the funds come from the county. So we do a lot of discretion with the more serious in writing the state charge, just because of the budget and the amount of time we bug Mr. Morrissey on all the different things we're always having him do. We try not to do very many criminal under the city code.
So you don't see this as a problem?
Not usually. If the city code would just be fines, no, I don't see it as an issue.
You don't? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion second?
No. I would make a motion.
So entertain a motion by, motion by Anderson to approve the first reading of the ordinance, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, counsel, we are having our second reading of a rezoning at 413 North Third Street from M2 to B1 Business District. We'll open the public hearing, second reading at this time, and ask if there's any comment. Not, we'll close the public hearing. Any feedback, counsel, on this rezoning issue? Not entertain a motion to approve the second reading.
So moved.
Second by Rasmussen and second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, counsel, we have our third and final reading for the ATV ordinance. John, I'm glad you're here to be able to participate in this one. You've missed all the fun on this one. But we will open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any comment on the ordinance as proposed. I just wanted to mention that I was really surprised about a week or so ago, I got a call from KCII in Washington, wanted to know a lot of detail about our ordinance. I don't know whether they're planning one up there or what it was, but they were, there was a lot of, a lot of curiosity, so. We'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion to pass the...
Before we do the motion, we have two last-minute revisions that, if you looked at it before this, today, they were not there, they were added today, but they're live on your link now. One is moving the location of application from City Hall to the Law Center. Chief Thomas is going to take that on with his people. And moving the timeframe for the, for the tag, instead of being a calendar year, to align with the fiscal year for budgetary reasons and because that's what the tags that are already ordered say. So there are, and those changes, if you click on your link, are the purple changes. So those should be the only two additional changes from the last reading.
So the line at the bottom here, number three under Section Six, then instead of saying one calendar year, should say one fiscal year, since we're doing it on the fiscal year? Okay, so that word needs to change.
So you'll only need to get one permit if you live in Jefferson County to use anywhere in the city or outside of the city. Is that right? No. So I just wanted to clarify that to the community before we approve this fee.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Thank you. Counsel, we, as this was an election year, we will be swearing in council members, mayor, and all of our appointed positions approved by the council. January 2nd, on Tuesday, will be our first calendar day of the new year and like to hold just a special meeting to do those. Do you prefer a noon meeting or an evening meeting? Good.
I cannot make a noon meeting.
Okay. So why don't we set that for 7:00 PM on January 2nd for our first 2018 Business Council meeting? So entertain a motion to set January 2nd.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. So move to our committee and board reports, Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee met on the 17th to conduct our city engineer's six-month performance evaluation as per her contract contingent on a positive result. Her salary would go up slightly and extend some vacation days. So we went through the same six-month evaluation form we used with Mike Harmon and found that Melanie Carlson's work was adequate. Just kidding, it was very good. She has been very busy doing project management while there was no administrator. So we're looking forward to, now that we have our administrator, her getting able to get back into the engineering side of things. But we felt that her performance was, was good, above average, and that we would recommend fulfilling the contract and raising the salary and the vacation days as per the contract. That's a motion.
Move by Hallie to approve the, and approve the contract and also the recommendation based on the six-month review.
Second.
Second by Anderson. I think Melanie's been doing an outstanding job also and has been a good fit with our group here in City Hall. Thank you for that, Melanie. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. So move to our committee and board reports, Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee met on the 17th to conduct our city engineer's six-month performance evaluation as per her contract contingent on a positive result. Her salary would go up slightly and extend some vacation days. So we went through the same six-month evaluation form we used with Mike Harmon and found that Melanie Carlson's work was adequate. Just kidding, it was very good. She has been very busy doing project management while there was no administrator. So we're looking forward to, now that we have our administrator, her getting able to get back into the engineering side of things. But we felt that her performance was, was good, above average, and that we would recommend fulfilling the contract and raising the salary and the vacation days as per the contract. That's a motion.
Move by Hallie to approve the, and approve the contract and also the recommendation based on the six-month review.
Second.
Second by Anderson. I think Melanie's been doing an outstanding job also and has been a good fit with our group here in City Hall. Thank you for that, Melanie. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Ways and Means Committee.
You may have to help me, you and Michael may have to help me a little bit with this since I left early. But we had a meeting on last Tuesday with Iowa Wind and Solar that we've had a few other ongoing discussions throughout the, since late in the fall about making more of the city operations subject to solar energy, particularly with, and some of the savings that are there are tremendous when you consider the amount of electricity used in, particularly at the wastewater and water treatment plants. And again, and I think, you know, the biggest thing that we have with that as with anything, it's a large expense. It's not that, not that the idea of going green probably, in the end, over a period of time saves some money, it's probably the way to go. Again, it's still the issue of paying for it. And I think that's what we're still exploring. I think we'd like to have some more information from the committee, from the people, Iowa Wind and Solar.
What they've done, counsel, is they've prepared a portfolio for the city of all of our municipal buildings, including our two utilities. And it is a package that's based, they have two different financing models for the entire package. They, if you recall, it was, not sure of the date, but I think it was sometime last spring where Alliant Energy was changing their policy on grandfathering in applications for essentially, you know, net metering-type payments for these, these types of developments. They were going to change that. So we did approve for Iowa Wind and Solar to consider a good faith offer from the city to look into this. That deadline is going to come up on April 1st. So they're trying to move this through very quickly. So there are two, there are a couple of issues. The one main issue would be whether the city would be willing to just move forward and contract with this group or to go to an RFP where we are getting, we're soliciting competitive proposals for this as well. Now, the timeline is what's sensitive here because creating, drafting an RFP, getting it out, and getting those responses back and making a decision on a larger, that larger piece of money and how it's going to be financed, there's a lot of work to do. They've put a lot of work into this, I think, in good faith. We should look at it closely and hopefully, I think we're going to have a presentation on December 18th. And I assume Ways and Means may meet one more time with them before that point. But hopefully on December 18th, we'll be able to bring you back, you know, essentially a couple of decisions to be made if that's the direction we would like to go.
To add to that and give you a little inside information, the buildings that they had applied, had submitted interconnection applications are smaller in terms of the larger picture. And one of them's off the table now. It's the old museum or the old library, just can't handle solar on the roof. So to hurry this through, to try to get a couple of them that are smaller onboard before the interconnection application probably isn't in the best interest of the city. And I can just say that from knowing how that application has panned out, it really won't affect those projects very much. So that's another perspective of, of not necessarily needing to heed this one-year timeframe. I can get some more information on that if anybody's curious, but because it's a big decision. There's a lot more information that we should be considering than what was provided at that meeting.
Okay. So I think we'll go ahead and move on to Public Safety.
Public Safety met prior to council this evening and we had a full agenda this evening. We had a request for no parking signs that, after discussions, has been denied and our new city administrator gets to have conversation with the citizens. So he volunteered to make that call for us, so we appreciate that. Again, we reviewed in detail the ordinance, the ATV ordinance, and along with the resolution tonight for the fee and the ordinance, we have the permit that the applicant will receive, one minor change on it, and the actual application that was modeled, again, after the county. And I will be passing both of these to Becca with minor changes. And then we'll be ready to take applications tomorrow. So we were, we had extensive discussion from the police department about civil infractions, how they work, how the funding works, how the state feels about it, how they feel about it. And they've asked the city to consider a civil infractions ordinance. So we will be further discussing that and looking at other communities that have a civil infraction ordinance. And we were also asked to once again consider a curfew ordinance. And both of those have been moved for review of existing ordinances in other similar-sized communities. So, and then we already had the motion on the general misdemeanor penalty. So that was our meeting this evening.
Great. Thank you.
Pass to Becca, please.
And counsel, we'll move to our administration, administrator and department reports. Darryl, you have a report for us on a sale of a pickup truck, a dump truck.
Dump truck. Yes. It's in our fleet. It's a 1994 Ford F-700 with a standard box on it. And we'd like to put that up for sealed bids. We already, we still have three Sanders available to us and that's what we use for our fleet and for sanding the town. But this one has kind of outlived its purpose, so we'd like to put it up for, for sale and have permission to do so.
Okay. Entertained a motion of support for the sale of the 1994 Ford F-700 dump truck.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Anderson.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Doesn't look like we will have our library report this evening, project report.
Good evening. As it's been kind of a hefty meeting tonight, unless you have any other questions, the only thing I'd like to point out on this report is the Adam Avenue reconstruction. This was questioned at our last, maybe not our last meeting, but at least my last project update. Even though right now we have some very nice weather this time of year, the price of concrete does go up due to the mixed design for the colder weather concrete. So when we found out that the Alliant gas main that needed to be moved was not going to start until November 17th, internally, we decided to not spend that additional funds on getting the concrete poured in cold weather, also with the potential of bad weather making it an even poorer product. That will remain gravel through the winter with the city crews maintaining the best you can of gravel road on a city street. But it will allow the, all the property owners to access their homes and not have to use the sidewalks during these potentially winter-like time period. So we will, in the spring, that, that project will start up again.
Great. Thank you, Melanie. Any questions, counsel? Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.